It is now seven o'clock PM and I will call the meeting to order. Can I please get a roll call?
Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Blakely. Counselor Blakely, is that you?
That was not her, that was Dr. Samiraju.
Counselor Forbeck?
Here.
Counselor Keys?
That was the doctor again. I'm keeping, I'm muting.
Okay. Counselor Keys?
Here.
Counselor Levy? Counselor Pruschel?
Yeah.
President Duncan?
Here.
All are present, we have a quorum.
Counselors, please mute your phones. I'll rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so there are three proclamations this evening. The first proclamation is declaring November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday. It reads, whereas Small Business Saturday was launched nationally in 2010 in an effort to support local shops and expand the community's economy. And whereas there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas small businesses and independent retailers are the backbone of our nation, creating jobs, boosting the local economy, preserving our neighborhoods, and giving back to the community. And whereas Small Business Saturday promotion will take place on November 28th, 2020, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, to encourage consumers to bring more holiday shopping to small businesses. And whereas various participating businesses will have sales, specials, treats, and more to create a festive atmosphere. And whereas Small Business Saturday will stimulate local economy, growth, and strengthen our small business community. Now therefore, the City Council President of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 28th, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Beloit, recognizing the tremendous contributions of small businesses to the economic sustainability of our community, and encouraging consumers to shop small businesses in Beloit all year long to find unique gifts, dine locally, support and get to know our friends and neighbors who operate small businesses. Presented this 16th day of November 2020, City Council President Regina Duncan.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. We are certainly grateful for our small businesses in Beloit. So let's all shop small on Saturday. Thank you.
Item 3B is a proclamation recognizing November 23rd to the 28th, 2020 as Black Business Week. It reads, whereas black business owners account for about 10% of US businesses and about 30% of all minority-owned businesses. And whereas nearly 40% of black-owned businesses are in the service industry, including healthcare and social assistance, repair and maintenance, auto dealerships, consulting services, restaurants, barber shops, and beauty salons. And whereas Rock County Jump Start launched the Black Business Week Virtual Expo from November 23rd to the 28th, 2020 to feature black-owned businesses in the Rock County and surrounding areas. And whereas November 23rd through the 27th, 2020, black business owners will promote their business during 15-minute time slots using a virtual vendor booth, streaming live from Rock County Jump Start's Facebook page. And whereas there will be a special focus and emphasis on black-owned businesses in the City of Beloit and recognize their many contributions to society. And whereas, the expo week will end with a socially-distanced pop-up event on Small Business Saturday, November 28th, from noon to 4:00 at The Birch Room, located 3807 South Riverside Drive in Beloit, giving community members an opportunity to buy local. And whereas, the City of Beloit is committed to inclusion of all people as a core value. Now therefore, the City Council President of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim November 23rd to 28th, 2020 as Black Business Week in the City of Beloit, encouraging all residents to recognize and support the 48 African-American-owned businesses in the greater Beloit community in an effort to close the racial wealth gap in Wisconsin. Presented this 16th day of November 2020, City Council President Regina Duncan.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. Gina Stephens is here this evening. She is the founder and executive director of Jump Start and is here to accept the proclamation. Gina, you're welcome to come, you're already for it, but to say a few words. And we are so happy to see you today. We're smiling underneath our masks. So we are so grateful that you're here this afternoon. If you could share some words with us.
Thank you, Council President Regina Duncan, and thank you to all Beloit City Council members for recognizing and honoring the value black businesses bring to the City of Beloit. The vitality, stability, and longevity of black businesses in Beloit is crucial to the economic development and well-being of Beloit's black community. Thank you, Beloit City Council, for your support.
And Gina, just stand for just a second. I'd like to say something to you. On behalf of our Beloit City Council, thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate your dedication and leadership and what you bring to our community. So thank you very much. And thank you, Angela, for being here today, too. Alrighty.
And item 3C is a proclamation recognizing Bill Barth on retirement from Beloit Daily News. It reads, whereas William "Bill" Barth graduated from Southern Illinois University in Carbondale with a journalism degree. And whereas Bill accepted a position with the Beloit Daily News in 1976 and was eventually appointed editor in 1994. And whereas, he is the consummate wordsmith, receiving numerous professional journalism awards, both personally and on behalf of the Beloit Daily News. And whereas Bill was inducted into the Beloit Historical Society Hall of Fame in 2019. And whereas Bill's expressed philosophy is truth matters in a time when information without fact-checking abounds. And whereas he has served on the Wisconsin Newspaper Association's Legislative Affairs Committee, working on legislative initiatives to preserve and improve government transparency. And whereas his balanced, not-provoking editorials have inspired, incensed, and caused much discussion throughout Beloit and beyond, providing us with differing viewpoints and ideas. And whereas Bill has been the wind beneath the wings of countless reporters who received a strong foundation in mentoring with the Beloit Daily News before departing for journalism assignments across the country. And whereas Bill has been a strong advocate and community partner, serving on many boards and committees for the community organizations and nonprofit groups. And whereas, we have all appreciated Bill's wit and wisdom over the past 44 years and the many personal articles he has written about his travels. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Beloit, Wisconsin, recognizes the journalistic skills of William "Bill" Barth, and extend our gratitude for his no-nonsense approach to reporting the facts, supporting the arts, and participating in community events. We extend our best wishes to him and his future endeavors. Presented this 16th day of November 2020, Regina Duncan, City Council President.
Thank you, Clerk Stotler. Bill was unfortunately unable to come this evening, but I'm sure he's watching. On behalf of the Beloit City Council and staff, I want to thank you, Bill, for your many years of service. Your partnership was particularly exemplary this year with COVID-19. You made informing the public with factual information a high priority and undoubtedly helped us keep people more safe. This is just an example of the many ways Bill has benefited the public throughout the years. You will truly be missed, Bill Barth. So thank you very much, and we recognize you this evening.
Item 4 is public hearings, and there are none. Moving on to public comments.
We have reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. Council members may not act on any request at this meeting, but they refer a speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you please hold your comments to three minutes or less and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. Public comment is a courtesy, and we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Speakers are asked to complete a public comment form or submit an email prior to our meeting. Were there any public comments submitted prior to this meeting, Clerk Stotler?
Yes, Madam President, there were several, and I will just read them in the order that they came in.
Thank you.
Dear City Counselors, I write in strong support of the proposal to amend ordinance number 3690, which is item 8B on Monday's agenda. The rule restricting signs on pedestrian bridges seems to me to be an arbitrary and unnecessary restriction of free speech in our city. Thank you for considering my opinion, Dr. Ellen Joyce, 1134 Eaton Avenue. From Jenny Hoopel, 1300 Strong Avenue, I want to express encouragement for you changing the Beloit sign ordinance to allow signs to be displayed on pedestrian bridges crossing public roadways. Thank you for your work. Shannon Osterich of 2022, South Glen Avenue, says, please change the ordinance to allow the Black Lives Matter signs on the Beloit College Pedestrian Bridge. Allison Philip Lamont at 2429 Lathers Road says, ladies and gentlemen, read it, pass it, sign it in relation to the COVID-19 Prevention and Control Resolution. Mark Winslow says, to whomever it may concern, public signage displayed in an unobstructive manner should be permitted to sit out in accordance with our First Amendment rights. In the times we face such forms of protest prove invaluable to hold up the ideals we deem invaluable. Megan Miller, 1136 Partridge Avenue, says, thank you for taking my comment. I am writing to support the ordinance change to allow signs on pedestrian bridges. The Black Lives Matter sign is a point of pride to me as a Beloit resident. To me, it rebukes racism and declares a hope for unity for the city. I'm proud to live in a community that sees and honors multiculturalism and different identities that strengthen Beloit. Certainly, other large private properties have had no issue displaying large, potentially distracting, political signs. I would much prefer signs that call for us to embrace our shared humanity and value. Thank you for considering this ordinance change and for the work you do for our community. John and Kay Clark say, mask in public in Beloit. I am thankful for public wearing masks and social distancing in Beloit. These precautions are necessary if we hope to curtail the spread of this dreadful COVID virus. That's the end of the comments I received, Madam President.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who gave comments for today. Much appreciated. Are there any other members of the public that did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Final call. Are there any other members of the public that did not sign up who wish to address the council this evening? Public comment is now closed. Next, I would like to move item 11A up on the agenda.
Item 11A is consideration of Resolution 2020-179, extending Resolution 2020-166 related to COVID-19 prevention and control.
At this time, City Manager Lori Curtis Luther will present, followed by our infectious disease specialist, Dr. Samiraju.
Thank you. Since the time-
Hello, guys. This is Dr. Samiraju. Can you people see me or hear me? I don't know.
We can hear you, Dr. Samiraju. If you could stay on the line, we're going to have City Manager Luther just introduce you, if that's okay.
Okay. I just want to let you guys know that I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Wonderful. Since the time that I drafted the staff comments recommending the extension of local face covering requirements and physical distancing in public spaces in Beloit, the situation in regard to COVID-19 in the city proper and the state of Wisconsin as a whole has deteriorated. A new category has been created at the state level to address the critically high level of infection in Rock County and elsewhere throughout the state. The most recent statewide hospitalization levels I have seen were at 90% capacity, which is very alarming. That said, we have the benefit of advice from Dr. Samiraju, the infectious disease specialist from Beloit Health System. Dr. Samiraju, thank you so much for joining us again this evening. Would you please share a few words with the city counselors and the public at large?
Yes, thank you for inviting me. So I just heard you say that all the hospitals in the area are almost 80% to 90% at their capacity, and we are also going through a big surge in Beloit Health System and Beloit Hospital. So I just want to again bring to the attention of the public and everyone, please wear a mask. Masks will protect you from several waves. One, it will protect from COVID. Not only from COVID, even from the influenza, like flu. And it will also protect you from multiple other viruses, especially during this season, the flu season. There are not only COVID, not only flu, there are so many other viruses float around, especially indoors. So try to make sure that you practice good hand hygiene. And also, when you leave your homes, try to wear a mask. Even at home, if you have immunocompromised patients or elderly patients, and you have a sick child going through a flu or whatever, so try to be protective to the elderly, especially over 50, 65 years, or anybody with critical or any medical illnesses, like diabetes, hypertension, immunocompromised, whatever the reasons. So masks will definitely will help us. Again and again, the scientific research has proved for last 100 years, masks will help. Hand hygiene will help with multiple different infection or that is the best infection control we can do as a human being. So I'm going to insist again and again, social distancing, masking, hand hygiene. We can get through this COVID pandemic, especially now we are in a crisis mode, second wave or third wave, whatever you call it, it's really, really in a high peak. And please make sure that you protect yourself and your families and also your neighbors and your community. If there is any question I can answer, I'm here for like several minutes, so let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Samiraju, for all the information. And also a special thank you to all our frontline workers and heroes at Beloit Health System for what you're doing. So thank you. To begin, I'll take a motion to approve this resolution. Can I get a motion, please?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Forbeck. Is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Second by Counselor Keys.
Second by Counselor Blakely.
Okay. What we'll do now is, if it's okay, counselors, I'll take questions and comments, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just a question for Dr. Samiraju. I know the answer, I think all of us on this council know the answer, but I think it's just good for you to say it. Dr. Samiraju, what would you say to people who are planning on having in-person gatherings for Thanksgiving and the rest of the holiday season?
I know there are so many Thanksgivings coming up in the future. I think we should save Thanksgiving and meeting, family meetings, family gatherings, or friends, whatever gatherings, for the future. And if we have a lot of communication devices, please communicate with them on the phone or whatever they need, the FaceTime. There are so many ways you can see each other. I think we should stay away, having any big gatherings or any gatherings. I think as, just to your family, or whoever is at home, that's Thanksgiving, celebrate Thanksgiving with the family members, whoever is at home. No newcomers into the house, or you're not visiting anyone. So that will be my recommendation, is just stay home and enjoy your Thanksgiving.
And then just one more question. We're seeing people in the community talking about opening things up, one of which is the schools in our community. I know the school in Beloit is shut down. What would you say to the folks that are demanding that we open up schools at this point in time with way COVID is looking?
I think the way the COVID is looking now, I think this is not the time to open up anything. This is the time to close down or even lock down things. So some of the states are coming up with, you know, bigger cities are trying to close down a lot of things. I think we are almost at the verge of lockdown. Again, you know, if things escalate further, I think we are in the peak of the pandemic now. Especially, this is complicating with the winter season. I think we are in the peak of pandemic now. Next few months will be really badly impacted.
Thank you, Dr. Samiraju. I have no more questions.
Sure.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Thank you for being here, doctor, and for your straightforwardness, scientific knowledge, and advice for all of us here in Beloit and Rock County. I just wanted to ask you very quickly, are you doing anything creative for Thanksgiving yourself?
No, I'm not doing any creative, no. So I'll be just home with my husband, my son, and my daughter. That's it. Nothing. And I have so much family around, we plan to call each other and just talk on the phone.
Very good. Thank you so much. And do have a happy Thanksgiving when we get there.
Yes. Thank you, thank you very much. And you know, if there is anything that can be around, otherwise, can I go offline?
Yes, you can. And we'll just take questions and comments, and if we have to relay those later to you, we will. So thank you very much, doctor.
Yes, thank you for coming and joining us again.
Thank you very much. Have a good Thanksgiving too. Bye-bye.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to Counselor Forbeck. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I don't have any questions. I do have a plea. Please, everybody, it is catastrophic here in Wisconsin. I'm ashamed of ourselves. What are we doing? Having Packer parties? Stop it. I just can't believe the people who feel that these things shouldn't be done. And I'm frightened for all of us because of that. Thank you. That's all.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I want to just thank Dr. Samiraju for attending the meeting, and I appreciate how she highlighted the benefit of masks, not only to COVID but to other illnesses. One of the very scary things that could happen with our hospitals reaching their capacity is that individuals that even need healthcare services that does not include COVID, they may face limited healthcare staff. So I want to thank the healthcare workers. I work in the healthcare setting. Our healthcare workers are very fatigued right now. And just for the sake of everyone's health, just please do your best to comply with all precautions. And I thank everyone for holding strong with applying these precautions because the fatigue is real. And we all need to do this to help keep everyone safe as possible. That's all my comment, for my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question for Lori here, probably best, I don't know which one. I know we talk about the importance of wearing masks and stuff, and we put in, you know, recommendations where people should do it. Is there a way that we could move that to a rule, a mandate? Can someone speak to that? If that's allowed or if that's not allowed to just mandate people in the city to wear masks?
So Counselor Levy, I think you might be confusing us with Rock County. Rock County has only been issuing guidance, but the City of Beloit, in fact, has had a requirement that face masks be worn in public settings very early on. So the item for your consideration this evening is an extension of that existing order, which in fact requires face coverings in public settings, including private businesses that are open to the public. There is an exemption for some rare medical conditions that might prevent an individual from wearing said face covering. But we also have a physical distancing requirement that is a minimum of six feet in addition to the face coverings in those public spaces. So yes, I think that the ordinance before you does, or pardon me, the resolution before you does just that and makes it clear that in the City of Beloit proper, it is not only a suggestion, it is indeed a legal requirement.
Yeah, you're right. I got the two entities confused. So we were just speaking of this on the county level the other day, so I apologize. Okay.
No, you're fine. And Counselor Levy, we absolutely support Rock County also having requirements. I understand the guidance that they have provided is somewhat helpful, but I agree that tackling this on a city-by-city basis is not the best public health policy. And certainly county-wide guidance, given the fact that there is a lack of statewide guidance, would be preferred.
Thank you.
Next, Counselor Pruschel, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do, but before I go to those, I'd just like to say I can understand Kevin's confusion sitting on the county board as he does. And it would be easy to get that confused. Anyway, I'm going to read a brief note from a friend a couple weeks ago. She spent seven days in the hospital after suffering from COVID that turned into double pneumonia. And there's another friend of mine observed, who said that death is only the worst case. It's not the only case that comes from a contact with COVID-19. And it's important that we keep in mind that it affects people in many different ways. But this is what my friend had to say last week, the day after she got home. Some interesting COVID-19 experiences I've had. Weight comes off quickly, 14 pounds in 17 days. Breathing can be a workout. I never knew my eyelashes could hurt, and that sometimes I'm so tired I can't blink. The palms of your hands, soles of your feet can burn as a side effect. Eight days of 103 to 104.5 temps make your lips and tongue peel. Peeling tongue is very sensitive. Every day is different, and you never know what to expect. Wear your mask. Try to avoid getting or giving it to anyone. I realize my experience is unique, but to me, COVID sucks. So that's all I have to say, and we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pruschel. And I appreciate you sharing that story with us and also the public this evening. And I just have a comment. This extension is necessary. And Dr. Samiraju informed us again tonight about the importance of face coverings and physical distancing to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Given the statewide hospitalization rate, it is now even more important to continue our protective measures here in Beloit. We are hopeful about vaccine development and distribution. However, we must reduce infections and consequently hospitalizations to avoid overwhelming our health system. We must continue to work together as a community to save lives. So, that said, at this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Please, Clerk Stotler, can you call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Pruschel.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Moving back to item 6, which is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a counselor member so requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the General Order of Business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Would any counselor like anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, including items 6A through 6D? Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
I will make that motion.
I think it was Counselor Prusil first, and then Counselor Blakely second. At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. There are no licenses this evening taking us to ordinances. 8A is Consideration of Ordinance Number 3689 to create Section 9.14 Sub 2 Sub DG and 9.28 Sub 4 of the General Court of Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to erosion control inspections. This is second reading.
At this time, our Community Development Director Julie Christensen is here to provide an overview and address any questions. But I believe she's on the phone, so Julie.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
We can. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Community Development Department has requested a new fee to help offset the state mandated inspections for erosion control measures for one and two-family dwellings. This new fee would be added to the fee schedule for the 2021 calendar year. Proposed fee is a $100 fee. That would be added to the building permit fees for new one or two family dwelling development projects.
Okay, well, I will, thank you, Julie. At this time, can I please have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck. Is there a second?
Counselor Keys will second.
Second by Counselor Keys. Now we'll go down the list of counselors for any questions or discussion on this motion. Vice President Anderson, beginning with you. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
Yes, I do. Perhaps I should know this, but I do not. This fee is for one or two-family dwelling development projects. Am I right in assuming that there already was a fee for larger dwellings, Julie?
There is a fee for larger projects. So there is an erosion control fee for, like, the multifamily residential, the commercial projects.
Okay, thank you so much. I was just wondering. No problem.
Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prusil, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I don't.
At this time, there is a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Please, Clerk Stotler, can you call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Under Item 8B, we have Consideration of Ordinance Number 3690, amending Sections 11.05 Sub 2, 30.12 Sub 2, 30.08 Sub 1, 30.08 Sub 2, and create Section 30.12 Sub 1 Sub G, 30.12 Sub 1 Sub H, 30.12 Sub 6, and to amend the heading of Section 30.12 of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit relating to pedestrian bridges and signs affixed there too.
At this time, City Manager Luther will give us a presentation.
Thank you. As I have previously stated, the city's sign ordinance is antiquated, and this is a small step in the right direction to update the ordinance to be consistent with changing times. Previously, the city did not have any specific regulations for pedestrian bridges, recognizing that they are different from other locations. That said, I would like to thank Assistant City Attorney Guanichoa, Community Development Director Julie Christensen, and Director of Planning and Building Services Drew Pennington for working cooperatively with me to present this proposed ordinance amendment and new language. As a matter of clarification, while it was not relevant to the ordinance change, in response to some accusations that the city was not in compliance with state law in regard to the Black Lives Matter sign that was previously affixed to Beloit College's pedestrian bridge, I did include a statement in the packet from the Department of Transportation recognizing that the city of Beloit has full authority over the roadway in question below the Beloit College Bridge. The proposed ordinance creates definitions for pedestrian bridges and allows for them under certain conditions, including a sign permit, owner authorization, proof of liability insurance, size restrictions, location specifications, and time restraints. Again, the city does not regulate content. With that said, staff and the group that I mentioned are available to answer questions, and we recommend the amendments and additional language as presented.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. Can I please have a motion to suspend the rules and consider both first and second reading, please?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, motion by Counselor Prusil. Is there a second?
I'll second, Vice President Anderson.
Second by Vice President Anderson. At this time, there is a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion?
I have a question. This is Kevin.
Go ahead, Kevin. Go ahead, Counselor Levy.
So Lori, did I hear you correctly by saying the city cannot control the contacts? And I did read the ordinance under 22?
So yes, the city does not regulate content. We regulate time, manner, and place in which signs can be displayed. There are four incidences of pedestrian bridges in the city of Beloit where this, where signs would be eligible for a permit under the new language. Two of those pedestrian bridges are owned by the city of Beloit, and so we would control content on the two signs, or on the two bridges, pardon me, that the city owns. One of the pedestrian bridges is owned by Frito Lay, and the other remaining pedestrian bridge is owned by Beloit College. So we would be permitting Beloit College and potentially Frito Lay, who as an example, may wish to display signage related to their business on the pedestrian bridge that they own, and that would be allowable under this ordinance.
My question is, what if, and I'm not saying that either one of them would, but I know the city can control the ones that we, on our bridges, but what if there's a message that goes up that's kind of dividing the community or some kind of, you know, lack of a better term, hate messages or something? I'm not saying that they would. How would we handle that?
So the only way to completely prevent that possibility from ever existing is to prohibit signs on those locations altogether. There is a level of community trust with Beloit College and with Frito Lay as a major manufacturer, and this is the mechanism that we came up with that provides an opportunity for Beloit College, as an example, to put the sign back that had received a great deal of community support and some community opposition. I don't think we can achieve 100% what you are asking if any signage is allowed whatsoever.
Okay, yeah, and I just want to restate again that I truly believe that neither one of those would do it, but I was just looking at the amount of attention that the sign got up to. And so that was, so that was just my concern.
Just to add to that question, City Manager Luther, I was just wondering. I know in that, in our packets for information, it says something about that you have authorization too as well in there? I thought, no?
No. It's really important that the city stay away from regulating content, and so it's unlawful for the city to regulate content. Let me be clear. So, given the fact that we believed that some signage was appropriate for the pedestrian bridges, particularly the one in question that is owned by Beloit College, that it seemed to be a reasonable request, we presented to you an ordinance that has some restrictions, and there is a time restriction as well. It is not, it does not allow a sign in perpetuity. So that is an additional protection, if you will, that the city continues to maintain. But we do not and cannot speak to the content. I hope that responds to the question. So this was a creative solution to a unique situation.
Thank you, City Manager Luther, for that clarification, and also thank you, Beth. At this time, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Can, I'll ask Clerk Stotler to please call the roll at this time.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Next, can I please have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I still have that motion.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, seconded by Counselor Prusil. Now I'll take questions and have discussion from counselors, beginning with Vice President Anderson. Do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I appreciate staff finding a creative solution to this. You know, unfortunately, we had to have this discussion because people didn't appreciate the subject matter, and that's what this was about. But once again, so thank you to staff for doing the right thing and updating this ordinance. I know City Manager Luther said it was antiquated, and I think that's the best way to put this. So, once again, thank you, staff.
Counselor Blakely, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Counselor Forbeck, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just want to say again, this is an example, I think, of government saying that we trust our wonderful entities that we have in Beloit, both Beloit College and Frito Lay. So I'm proud of the very American way of taking a look at this issue. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Forbeck. Counselor Keys, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I do not. Thank you.
Counselor Levy, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
No, I do not.
Counselor Prusil, do you have any questions or discussion on the motion?
I just want to thank staff for the creative solution to this dilemma and remind people that the last time we revised the sign ordinance, it took, I think, three years. It might have been even more, and I'm sure Julie could bring us, could tell us all stories about it. But it's not an easy process. It's a complicated ordinance, and it is quite dated. It was probably dated when the previous council passed it years ago. I would also like to mention to Kevin that apparently Frito Lay does hang banners and signs off their pedestrian bridge, advertising for their hiring, et cetera. They have done that over the years. So this is, you know, I wasn't even aware of it or never paid attention to it until this ordinance change came up. So I'm happy we're able to do this, and I'd much rather be voting to allow people to have their freedoms and express themselves and trust in our neighbors and everything to do the right thing than to try and ban something or prevent, you know, I'd just, I'd rather operate in the positive rather than the negative. So I really appreciate the effort that went into this, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prusil. And I would just like to say that I too am proud of this partnership with Frito Lay and also Beloit College, and very thankful to our staff for the updates. So we are one community, so thank you. With that said, at this time, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Can I please have the clerk to call the roll?
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely. Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. There are no appointments this evening, bringing us to counselor activities and upcoming events.
At this time, we will have counselors, we'll take counselor comments, and if you'd like to, you can also mention some committees that you attended, beginning with Vice President Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all those who voted in the last election. This is one of the highest turnouts we've had in the city of Beloit, and that means that our amazing staff at the Clerk's Office were busy. So once again, thank you to them. I know I sent Lori Stotler an email asking another question and let her know my appreciation, but I just wanted to say it again. I know her, the staff, and all the people who helped out as poll workers are very busy, and to do it in COVID was just another layer of challenge. So greatly appreciate everybody there. Lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a safe Thanksgiving. I know this is not what we expected a year ago, but here we are. I ask all of you to please stay home. I know it's a challenge. I would like to go see my family too, but this is what we have to do. I know some people are making the argument that if they need to have an in-person Thanksgiving because this might be the last holiday they have with certain relatives. Unfortunately, the fact of the matter is, if you do have a gathering with your family this Thanksgiving, this may be the last holiday you have with them. So we need to be smart, we need to be wise, and we need to do the right thing. So have a good Thanksgiving, do it from a distance, do it at home with the people inside your household. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Blakely.
I feel at such an advantage following Vice President Anderson in his remarks. So first of all, I'll say hear, hear to everything that Counselor Anderson just said. I would also like to report that I went to an exciting event last week, virtually given this year. It was the Sixth Annual YWCA Racial Justice Conference. There were some powerful speakers from across the country and across the state of Wisconsin, and I was surprised at the amount of learning I took away with me. I believe it was well-attended, as it usually is, and I commend the YWCA for their efforts to pull it all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Forbeck.
Yes, I just want to say, of course, with my colleagues on the council, we're having a tiny Thanksgiving of two this year, and we have hosted, we have a very large family. We've hosted 38 people, just family members, at Thanksgiving before. So this is difficult but necessary. And I want everybody to say, anyway, say thank you to all the wonderful things that we have to say thankful for. And I'll be attending, along with Kevin, the CDC meeting this coming Wednesday, and enjoy, everybody. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Counselor Forbeck. Next, Counselor Keys.
I do not have any report from my commission, but my comments that I'd like to share echo what has already been said. Sincere appreciation and thank you to all the volunteers here, election day volunteers, workers, and to all city staff. This is easier in many ways. So thank you for all of your work for the sake, to ensure we all had a safe and fair election and opportunity to cast your vote. Again, thank you to all of our healthcare workers. This is a very trying time. We're very thankful for everyone who, also who... Um, we're very thankful for, um, everyone who, uh, to all of our first responders and all of our essential workers. And, uh, again, at Beloit, please have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving and continue to apply all the precautions. That ends my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keys. Counselor Levy.
Um, I would like to thank, uh, Lori Stotler and the entire staff and, uh, everyone who worked the election process. Um, I guess I will say, have a newfound respect for everything, um, that they do. I was at the library, uh, worked it all day, and kudos to Lori and her staff and anybody from the city who had anything to do with it, it ran smoothly. Uh, if we had questions, we, Lori was like on speed dial. You'd pick it up, and she was answering Johnny on the spot. Um, everything just seemed to run smoothly, and at the library, we had a lot of first-time people working the polls, and, and they were very pleased and enjoyed, uh, everything that, that went on, and they just enjoyed it, and they said they'll be back to do it again, but this was my first time doing it, I was very impressed. Um, I learned a lot, uh, I saw a lot of young people coming out registering, and, um, it's just a good opportunity. So if any of you ever get the opportunity to do it, I think we should all do it, um, because I truly enjoyed myself, but it was a great learning, um, experience. Thank you to the staff for all you do in this COVID season. Um, I know it's, it's difficult, uh, but we are making it through it. Um, and then finally, uh, some of you may have saw in the paper today, a young lady by the name of Mallory Henson, and I think Regina knows her as well. Um, that is also my cousin and also Regina's cousin. Um, she's a traveling nurse that actually Mallory goes out to different cities where the COVID is rampant, and, uh, she goes out on the front line and, and not volunteer, but she takes it as a traveling nurse. That's, she said, that's her passion to go out and work in ICU COVID units, uh, to help the patients, uh, who are struggling with COVID. Uh, so, uh, kudos out to her, uh, because if, we look at the danger of it, but not only her, but all the people in the medical field, the nurses, the doctors, who are facing this every single day. Um, I think if we could at some point, I don't know how we do it, just send proclamation or recommendation from the city council to Beloit Health Systems or wherever, just something to let them know we appreciate everything that they do, because while we're at home, they are out in the trenches every single day, um, living this, living it, um, every single day. So I want to say kudos to them, uh, for a job well done, and also the police and fire. You know, I can say, we're at home, and they're out in this every single day. So, uh, kudos to anybody who's out there on the front line. Uh, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Levy. Counselor Prusil.
I'd just like to, uh, acknowledge the efforts and the professionalism of our staff in so many ways that we've seen in the last month, in particular Lori Stotler and the Clerk's Group and the, uh, and the, and the county level. Everybody that handled those elections and, uh, they got through that process. They're still going, some of them are still going through it, and, um, I just really appreciate, um, how well it was done, and, um, I, I feel your pain every time you hear the criticisms out there. So, uh, and I'd also like to say, there's hope for my son. He, he volunteered in Pittsburgh and worked the polls for the first time, so maybe, maybe I'll turn him into a community, minded individual eventually after all. Um, I will say, I took, I've been out and about in the, in the city taking pictures and stuff, and today I headed down to the farmhouse and, um, bothered some of the guys working on the, uh, River Walk, and they said that they should be done with construction by the end of this week, by Friday. So that's good. Um, I don't know what that means as far as being usability goes, but they'll be done putting the big stuff in, and they'll have the railings up and everything. So it's looking really good, um, it's a beautiful day today. So, uh, it won't be long, and we'll be able to walk across that River Walk and, uh, enjoy the view, and it's, it's quite impressive. I'm, I'm amazed, Lori, amazed that we ever got that thing built. And I told them that, I said, I don't care what these railings look like, as long as they're there, and we got this thing built. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prusil. And now my comments. I just want to echo some of the same things that the counselor says. Thanks to all the election workers. I want to also, um, add to what Kevin said about our cousin Mallory Henson, who was in the paper today. Um, Mal, I was so proud of her, and so many others are just like her, putting their life on the line, um, uh, for all of us. So what we need to do is follow the safety precautions, as they've said, because they see more than what we see, they're right there every day. And so we want to be sure and do that, so, so proud of her. Next, I want to acknowledge that we have a special member of the public here tonight joining us in the forum. His name is Curtis. Maybe he'll be a future government person, right? We don't know, but I'm pushing it. So, so grateful to have you tonight, and we need to get more young people to come out and be involved and see what's going on. So thank you for being here this evening. Next, I want to say that I hope our veterans and their families had a very happy Veterans Day last week. We celebrate all those who have served and sacrificed in the United States Armed Forces and look forward to a more formal recognition next year. As far as my activities, I attended the Wisconsin State Public Defender Conference and the YWCA Rock County Racial Justice Conference online. Special thanks to Angela Moore, Amy Levy, the YWCA, and the presenters for their efforts to eliminate racism throughout our community. They did a fantastic job. In addition to that, I had the honor of speaking to Girl Scout Troop 7033 at the Beloit Public Library about the importance of voting and encouraged them to participate in government. I want to give a shout out to these Girl Scouts and their troop leaders, Alejandra Afonso and Janelle Willner-Tannehill. It was great to see that the troop leaders had a mock voting booth set up when I arrived. The girls had to complete ballots with three questions. They were one, who did they want to be President of the United States? Their second question was, did they want virtual school? And their third question, did they want to mandate wearing a mask? At the end, the votes were tallied, and the leaders announced the results. And, believe it or not, they were spot on. I was impressed by how smart and vocal the girls were. So I want to say to the girls, if they're watching this evening, to keep going, and I can't wait to see them in a leadership role. Again, special thanks to Alejandra and Janelle for their guidance with the troop. Keep up the great work, ladies. I also want to thank Austin Montgomery, Bill Barth, and Beloit Daily News for including my comments in the article about Vice President-elect Kamala Harris's historic victory, along with Dorothy Harrell, Michelle Hendricks-Nora, and Gina Stevens, who are some amazing women. I know firsthand how important it is that our children of color be inspired to achieve greatness. I truly believe it's imperative that we continue to give all of our young people inspiration and hope for the future. In closing, I wish members of the public and our entire City of Beloit staff a very happy Thanksgiving. Although the holiday will be a little different this year with our loved ones, I encourage you to please make plans and decide if and how you can gather safely. Please view our City of Beloit website and Facebook page for more information, and remember to wash your hands, wear a mask, cover your mouth and nose when you sneeze, clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces, and practice physical distancing. We will get through this together. This ends my report. Next, we will go to item 12A.
Item 12A, the city council will adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85/1/ E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, namely to discuss a potential collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI Local Number 4, 643 Transit Union. The council may reconvene into open session to take action on the matter discussed in closed session.
May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Moved by Counselor Forbeck, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Counselor Prusil. At this time, there's a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We are in closed session at 8:00 PM.
Thank you. All right. We are now in open session, and it is 7:17. May I please have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI Local Number 643? Is there a motion?
Nancy Forbeck, I still move.
Soundly like it was a motion by Counselor Blakely and a second by Counselor Forbeck. Is there any discussion? I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Blakely.
Aye.
Counselor Forbeck.
Aye.
Counselor Keys.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Prusil.
Aye.
President Duncan.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
And now we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, motion by Counselor Prusil, is there a second?
Second by Nancy.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Forbeck. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are now adjourned, and this ends our council meeting for this evening. Be safe, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, everybody, have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks.